So, your time is here and we're ready, so.
Thank you. Welcome to Lincoln City Council Meeting today for June 17th, 2019. Due to the Fourth of July Hollywood, or Hollywood, the Fourth of July holiday, the City Council will not meet Monday, July 8th. Let's please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment's silence. Call this meeting to order. In accordance with L.B. Did you do that for me? Thank you, Benny. Okay. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the chamber. The Order of Business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on them should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first than those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on the resolutions and items listed under third reading. And on the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to the adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes, we ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three. Does anyone wish to come forward for any of these items?
Seeing none.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Item 1A was introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Roy Christensen. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Excuse me?
Yes.
You didn't ask if I wouldn't like to vote?
Washington.
There you go.
I am so sorry.
That's okay. I'm new.
Go ahead, just say yes, just say yes. Or no.
Yes.
Thank you. Now the motion is six to zero. All right, um, let's see. Item 2A was introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Shob. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item, oh, next is our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Item 4A is application of Sebastian's Table Glen Oaks LLC, doing business as Sebastian's Table for the addition of an indoor area measuring approximately forty-one feet by forty-one feet on the ground level and twenty-eight feet by twenty-five feet on the upper level to their licensed premise at 8340 Glen Oaks Drive, Suite 100. Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Eric Huestad and home address, is that what you want?
Or the...
I've got so many addresses right now.
Or just the Glen Oaks one.
Yeah, that would be a good one probably for this, so, yeah, we'll do that. 8340 Glen Oaks Drive, Suite 100. We're just expanding our current bar. We're just adding some more seating space and a little bit more storage space above that. And we were kind of in the process of building this out before we even opened, so it was kind of like, it was just sort of trailing behind the rest of the project, but that's kind of what we're looking to do, so. Just a little extra room.
Yes, Roy? How long you been open now down there?
Um, we opened in the end of December, close to the end of December, yep, so.
How's it going?
It's good, yeah. We, you know, we got those rushes at the certain times where you need that extra space.
This time you have right now is a time where you could promote your business.
Good point.
Go ahead and say why we should come to Sebastian's Table Glen Oaks.
Oh, we believe we have fantastic food and service. Definitely something different Lincoln needs to support, you know, just because we kind of have a different way about the way we serve our food, and it's all family style, and you get to try lots of different stuff, so. We'll have a big party room, so that's kind of what we're working on now, is putting together. So if you've got some meetings or company parties that need to happen, come check us out, so.
Benny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I missed the Brussels sprouts, are they still on the menu, and the mac and cheese?
The Brussels sprouts are there. The mac and cheese is on our lunch menu right now. We're talking about putting that on our dinner menu as well.
And I'm excited to hear you're expanding because I've tried to get a reservation several times on a Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
That ain't happening.
That's what we're trying to accommodate. It's those big Friday afternoon, or Friday evening, Saturday evenings, yep, we can get bigger groups in now.
One last thing, is the S on your chest, does it stand for Sebastian?
Yeah, it does.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Next.
I will call items 4B through E together. They are the application of Holdfast MF LLC, doing business as Occidental for a Class CK liquor license at 735 O Street, Suite 2, and the related manager application of Jay Furnow. Next would be the application of Holdfast MF LLC, doing business as Kate Martin for a Class C liquor license at 735 O Street, Suite 1, and the related manager application of Jay Furnow. Could you gentlemen raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your names and addresses.
Jay Furnow, address is 735 O Street.
My name is Keith Hamm, H.A.M.M., 735 O Street.
Tell us a little bit. I'm gonna make Keith do it, huh?
Well, no.
So, yes, we were very fortunate to have leased space in the Fringe and Tassel Building. Very, very cool facade that I have personally always enjoyed. We're separating, since it's a long building, we decided to do two different concepts. Kate Martin will be cocktails and wine in the front, and then it's a separate license in the back half, the Occidental. A couple, just a tidbit on why we chose those names. Kate Martin was the manager of the St. Charles Hotel back in the late 1800s into the early 1900s, and she actually built the building that we're in, which is called the Occidental Saloon at the time. So we would like to keep the history in the Haymarket as it expands and as Lincoln sees more, you know, I like to call it weekday tourism. It's a lot more business people. I've worked in the Haymarket for the past five and a half years, and during the week we do get a lot more visitors, so I'd like them to experience Lincoln and learn something about Lincoln and Nebraska as well.
Good. Any questions?
Questions?
Yeah, Roy. Reviewing your application. I saw there was, not recently, but there's sure a long list of infractions and violations going on. And you're probably aware, have you been made aware, that will probably necessitate a hearing at the Liquor Commission?
Yes, yes, I'm very aware. I'm also not proud of any of that stuff. I do have a fair share of trouble, and I've made a lot of steps to change that in my life and have gotten away from that sort of activity and look forward to keeping away from that and being a, trying to be a successful business owner in the Haymarket.
All right, good to hear. Good. Anybody else at this time? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to come forward on this item? Seeing none. Next item.
I move approval of items 4A through E.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Tammy. That we approve items 4A through 4E.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is appointing David Carey as Director of the Planning Department.
Good afternoon, David.
Good afternoon, David Carey with the Planning Department.
Yay.
I guess I'd just like to mention that I am very honored and privileged to be able to continue to be the Director of the Planning Department. Obviously, this is a different step to take here to go into the full appointment. I am very appreciative of the opportunity. I know I've worked with most of you closely on many items. I look forward to continuing to do that. Those of you that I haven't worked with closely, I look forward to that as well. I would like to take a moment and to do the right thing and acknowledge my family who's here, who without them, I, you know, wouldn't be standing here, of course. My wife Paulette, my son Isaac, and my daughter Cecilia. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments for David?
What took you so long?
About the right, it's the right time.
All right.
Yep.
Just, I want to say thank you. Appreciate your, I like the way things are going now, and with you staying on like this, I know they'll continue to be in the same direction, and I'm gonna stop talking now.
Right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Benny's thoughts. Thank you for sticking around and taking this next step, and we'll be excited to have you.
Great, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, next item.
Next is item 5B, accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for May 16th through 31st, 2019. Is there anyone here to speak on a claim?
Seeing none.
All right, we'll go on to 5C, approving the fiscal year 2019 action plan. One-year use of funds for HUD entitlement programs using community development block grant, home, and emergency solutions grant funds.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Director of Urban Development. What you have before you today here is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. It includes how we intend to use federal funds, community development block grant funds, home funds, and emergency solutions grant funds. Lincoln is an entitlement city, but we still have to tell HUD what we're doing and get, to get federal approval. The document you have before you is an executive summary. The actual submission is not user-friendly, and so it's web-based, and it's required by HUD. It's available on the Urban Development homepage, on our launch page, under FY19 Action Plan. Urban Development prepares the plan and administers these funds. We've had several opportunities for public involvement processed to get input from the community. The annual action plan says what we will do to carry out those goals and objectives, and it identifies a five-year strategic plan, approved by council last year. So we're in the second year of our five-year plan. HUD's mandate includes three statutory goals. Provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities, all primarily for low and moderate income people or low and moderate income areas. Our department achieves those statutory goals in three broad areas through housing, community development, and homelessness. This year's funding level increases slightly for CDBG by $7,222 and ESG by $4,845 and decreases our home funding by $41,000. The majority of the funding goes for housing programs, including program income of $3.4 million with $200,000 for liberal neighborhood public improvement. Emergency solution grant funds and funds passed through to homelessness service providers along with state matching funds. Page five and six lists projects for our fiscal year 2019. They are substantially the same. The only difference is creating a program for Emerald Ash Bor for people who earn at the 50% AMI or below. This program is still pending with HUD, and it will be in coordination with the Parks and Recreation Department. Actual entitlements for 2019 for CDBG is $1,838,414. For home, $1,116,577. And ESG for $155,381. We've had a public comment period and had public information meetings, and the overwhelming need that we are hearing is for affordable, quality rental housing. Although funds are not specified for this use in the upcoming year, we are researching options and what other cities do to achieve this goal. With your approval, we will submit the action plan to HUD, and funds will be available by September 1st. Staff is ready to answer questions.
Any questions? All right.
Yes.
We've got some money here. It's not a huge amount of money.
No.
Are there ways we're using this money to leverage other funds? Creating synergies with other funds the city has available to us through state or local sources?
A lot of the funds that we send and go through neighborhood do use grants for other affordable housing projects, so we do leverage our dollars that way. A lot of our home funds are leveraged enormously because our dollars come in at the front end to help people close on loans, and then they take out a loan with a local bank, so those dollars become leveraged as well.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody from the audience that'd like to come up and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I believe we do our voting on resolutions at this time.
So item 5A is appointing David Carey as Director of the Planning Department, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second by Sandra Washington.
I was gonna jump over that one, I wanted to.
Make sure you got that. Okay, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
You really know what he's getting into. No, he doesn't. He knows. Okay.
All right, next is 5B, the report of claims. This was introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Roy. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. 5C then is the fiscal year 2019 action plan for HUD, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then are our public hearing ordinances second reading. Item 6A is change of zone 19013, application of Herbert and Elsie Olberg for a change from P public use to R4 residential on property generally located at 3,600 R Street.
David, would you like to come up if we have any questions?
Good afternoon, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department. I don't, I do not see the oping here today, but this is a straightforward change of zone. It really does not, it was on our consent agenda at the Planning Commission, approved unanimously. This is a lot that was for the caretaker for Wayuka. When there's a change of ownership, the change of zone did not happen previously. It was a P zoning. It was appropriate at the time as part of the cemetery. At this point, they need this change of zone to an appropriate residential zoning mainly because in order for them to get the appropriate permits through building and safety to do some upgrading, that they need the change of zone to happen. So that is basically why this is here in front of you, so I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Yes, Benny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's not really, it's, you said in order to do the upgrades, it needs to be a residential zoning. Is, the property is not changing hands? Is it still cemetery property?
It has already changed.
Okay.
Ownership, and so the new owners are asking for this change so they can get more easily the type of changes done that they want to do.
God, I missed that part, thank you. I underst-
Any other questions? I'd like to have Ed Zimmer come forward and have a brief discussion. I just like working with you, Ed, so.
Ed Zimmer, Historic Preservation Planner, Planning Department.
Has there been any, any plans on this or restrictions, or is this a historic building by any sort?
This is actually outside the boundaries, the fence line, that we generally regard as a cemetery immediately outside the R Street entrance. So it's not part of the National Register designation of the cemetery. It's an older building, and it's part of the historic evolution of the cemetery, but it's not been the caretaker's home, I think, for quite a long time.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
All right, we'll go on to items 6B and C. They are change of zone 19016, application of Chad and Cynthia Moore for a change from R2 residential to R2 residential with landmark overlay on property generally located at 3,422 Grimsby Lane and the related special permit 19027 for construction of a detached garage with waivers regarding height, lot, and area and other zoning restrictions, also located at 3,422 Grimsby Lane.
Yes. Doctor Zimmer?
I don't see the Moores with us today, but this has been through the Preservation Commission with a unanimous recommendation to you for approval of both items, and Planning Commission the same. These are really pretty modest adjustments to what I think will look like a very standard or a little bit above standard garage in the back here of this house, in the back corner of the property. Probably the most significant change is it allows a little greater height, but on a Tudor Revival, it wouldn't look nearly as well without that additional height. And that height, we measure halfway up the peaked roof, so zoning height is not quite the same as Richard's height, for instance, which we measure from the top of his head. Allows them to make full use of their property and supports their hobby interest in neat little cars. So I think this is quite a modest change, and they're putting themselves under the supervision of the Preservation Commission, which unanimously approved the project they want to build.
Sounds good. Any comments?
I think projects like this are wonderful when they, when homeowners themselves are trying to keep the character of the property and the neighborhood, so I really appreciate their willingness to come forward and be within the preservation standards.
Thank you, yes. Okay, thank you. So...
If no one else, that concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session on ordinances third reading. Item 7A is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter C by creating the classification of Community Forestry Inspector, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. 7B is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter A by creating the classification of Community Outreach Forester, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Roy?
This is a good thing.
Okay. Any other good thing, comments? Okay, seeing none. Move on.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 7C is amending the pay schedule for the A classifications to delete the classification of Forestry Operations Supervisor, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. 7D is amending the pay schedule for the M classifications to delete the classifications of City Forester and Golf Manager, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Second by Sandra Washington?
Sandra, actually.
Been moved and seconded. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. 7E is approving an agreement between the city and Verizon Wireless for the placement of a tower and telecommunications facilities upon city property generally located at South 84th and Yankee Hill Road, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. 7F is change of zone 19009, application of Matterhorn LLC for a change from O2 Suburban Office District to O3 Office Park District on property generally located at 6,900 L Street, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Moved and seconded. Any comments, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?